All right. Good evening, everyone. It is August 31st, 2020, and this is our City Council Study Session for this evening. And per the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-28, the City of Auburn is prohibited from holding an in-person meeting at this time. So per the City of Auburn's Resolution 5533, we have designated City of Auburn meeting locations for all council meetings, board meetings, commission meetings to be held as virtual meetings. And this will continue virtually and telephonically until King County enters into Phase 3, Governor Inslee's Safe Start Washington Phase reopening plan. And with that, Sean, would you please call the role?
Deputy Mayor Decourcy.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember J. Raj.
I'm here.
Councilmember Malanga.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
I would imagine he may be joining us shortly here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
She's excused.
Thank you.
All right. I do not believe we have any agenda modifications this evening. So we will move on to item four of our agenda, which is Resolution 5543 for council discussion. And I'd like to turn this over to our city attorney, Kendra Como. Kendra.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. I am here with you this evening for Resolution 5543 and specifically Exhibit A, the Rules of Procedure for the City Council. It is essentially our time to do an annual review of the rules, find out what's working, how we can improve, and what particular interests this council has in addressing certain issues. So I'm going to go through the rules. I wanted to let you guys know that way that these proposed revisions have come to you is Deputy Mayor Decourcy worked with two council members and in my consultation to review all of the rules. And then we are considering them tonight. Many of the rule changes are a matter of policy for the council to consider. They're not legal requirements. Where there are legal requirements, I'll be certain to make sure I put those out to you. And then if we have a consensus working through these proposed revisions tonight, the next step is the rules would be for your consideration on September 8th. But this time, I'm going to proceed with substantive changes. As we go through the rules, I flag them and I'll go over the options and what we're proposing to change. I'm going to skip some minor editing cleanup work. So where there might be like a typo or things like that, you'll see me skipping those. But I think the most important part is to do the high-level substantive review. And if anytime anyone has a question, please let me know and we can go through and work through this together. Okay? So the first section I'm going to start with is going to be at the top of page three. You will see these edits are in track changes. So the printed copy, if you have a printed copy in front of you, it'll be red. There'll be either a strike through or there'll be an underline. And then if you're on it electronically, you'll see those track change marks. Okay? So the first step is the change to Section 2.1 for regular meetings. And that is a simple change to clarify that the deputy mayor makes the seating decisions rather than having the seating be determined by a committee. The second substantive change is in Section 2.2 for study sessions on page three. It, you know, 2020 has taught us a few things and one of them is we may need virtual meeting locations. So it specifies and it maps what the OPMA allows us to do, that we can have a location that's a virtual forum for study sessions. Then in Section C, it allows for the layout for the study sessions to have a deputy mayor and the special focus area chairperson at the designated head table. Section 2.3, I'm just gonna move through that, just allows for the meeting notices delivered in reasonable means and updating it to 2020 language, having the website as part of the notification. On page four, Section 2.5, you'll see the change is clarifying that closed and executive sessions can be held in regular meetings or study sessions. And that is consistent with the OPMA as well. So it's just clarifying that under the OPMA, you can have closed and executive sessions in a regular council meeting, you know, before, after, or tagged onto a study session. Our next point to discuss is on page five, Section G for Public Hearing and Appeals. As you know, during this time, we have learned the value of having written comment and written participation in our public hearings. So specifically, this rule is allowing us to receive those written comments to the city clerk in advance of any public hearing. It's not a legal requirement to have in-person commentary in public hearings or in public comment. So this allows us the room to navigate in situations like we're in right now to receive that important public feedback. Now, the next substantive change is going to take us to page eight. So I'm going to pause a minute while everybody gets to that page. And on page eight, we have reframed Section 4.1 for council meetings and we've added another subsection for study sessions. And there's a few reasons for this. First of all, the notification if you are absent from a meeting. So for council meetings, as you all are aware, if you will be absent, you would notify the mayor or the city clerk. Now, I'm gonna jump down for a minute and come back. For study sessions, the proposed change in Section 4.2A, which is on the next page, page nine, that change is a policy decision before council to have notification go to the mayor or city clerk and the deputy mayor, if they're unable to attend a study session, and the chair of the ad hoc committee in special focus areas. Now, in working through this proposed revision, I know it was important for deputy mayor and you're welcome to jump in also. But when you're the chair of the meeting, it's important to know who's going to be present and who's not. And so that's a proposed revision for your consideration. And Deputy Mayor, did you want to add anything to that piece?
Thank you, Kendra. Just briefly, when I looked at this, you know, there may be some occasions when we have these meetings that perhaps the deputy mayor may not be informed, not by any, you know, specific intentional admission. But this section kind of clarifies how we notify each other to make sure that, you know, if there is an excused absence, then that excused absence is also recognized by the deputy mayor for the meetings the deputy mayor chairs.
Thank you. So then going just back to the bottom of page eight, that subsection B, you'll see some changes too. And again, that allows us to adapt more freely to situations that might arise, such as what we're experiencing in 2020. So it allows, you know, for council members to participate remotely only if authorized and approved by the mayor with notification to the deputy mayor. So the proposal might include if someone was traveling out of state for business, if we get back to that point, they would notify the mayor and deputy mayor, and it would allow for that council member to participate, which is an important governmental function that we're inviting them and continuing to encourage their participation. But I will note, at the very top of page nine, then, there is a sentiment that is solidified in these rules, they're adopted as revised. And that is a statement that the council prefers in-person attendance when possible. So trying to make sure that we're not abusing the fact that a remote option would be possible, but also allowing for that, given that we have the technological capabilities at this point. And then in Section C, we have the provision that remote attendance may be permissible for a declaration of emergency. That is similar to how the rules previously were worded. We've just reframed the structure here. So you're seeing it in track changes, but it was previously in the prior rules. Now, the section of 4.2, it just mirrors the council regular meetings. So it's just allowing for the study sessions, same thing. You could have remote participation in the study session under the same framework of the regular council meetings. I'm going to point out in Section 4.4, at the bottom of page nine, there is a proposed revision where a statement is included that the use of electronic devices are prohibited. So at all meetings of the city council, council members are prohibited from using cell phones or other personal communication devices. Now, this proposal is for your consideration. And one of the reasons for this might be because of public records. If someone sees a council member on the dais using a phone and maybe another council member picks up their phone, it may prompt a member of the public to wonder what's going on. And I see Councilmember J. Raj has a question.
Yeah, can you, or can we clarify electronic devices? Because sometimes we do use the iPad rather than the hard copy. So we might have to do that because when you say electronic devices, the iPad that we use is also an electronic.
I appreciate that. I will propose that the simple fix might be just to say exactly what we mean, and that's the use of cell phones is prohibited on the dais.
Okay.
That for your consideration.
Councilmember Sterns has a question.
Okay. You're muted, Councilmember Sterns.
How many other cities have this ban in place?
Have this what? I'm sorry, I missed that word.
Sorry, have this ban prohibition in place?
I can't quantify how many do. I know it is a frequent part of council rules in front of a city. Mostly what I've seen is because it comes up from public records. For example, I think it was last year, the City of Seattle had an issue that arose because council members were on their cellphone, and so it prompted some requests for public records related to those cell phones. And that is-
Are there any, you know, are you aware of any prohibitions?
Am I aware of other cities prohibiting the cell phone on the dais?
Yes.
I have seen it before in rules. I can't give you a specific city right now, but if I can, I'll go back to you and let you know what the other examples are. The other piece is this is not a legal requirement. This is a policy decision. So I know one of the issues that was raised when I was consulted with these revisions is also making sure that council members are engaged in the meetings and doing the work that's in front of them. So I leave that to your discretion and consideration, but it's somewhat of a a legal issue in terms of public records, but that's not really the central or only issue to be considered by the council.
Thank you.
The next substantive section, again, we're gonna be skipping a little bit. These are minor typographical in-between. So on page 13, I will draw your attention to Section 8.7.
Before we go on, can we finish the changes that were on the previous page? Because I see that 4.5 had a section that says comments were added.
Yes. So we can go back to 4.5 and for each of you, that's on the top of page 10. And the change there is to add a title to that paragraph so that it's mirroring the formatting of other substantive paragraphs and sections. And it does add the word comments. So council members shall also refrain from inappropriate or derogatory body language comments or other actions that detract from the Department of the City Council. So that additional word is up for the council's consideration. The council governs and monitors itself. That is certainly not something I do by any means. And so when you guys are looking at the conduct of your fellow council members, that is something that the council only regulates itself. So does anybody have feedback on the addition of the word comments before we move on?
Councilmember Sterns has a question.
Um, I guess comments is kind of vague, but it's okay. I was just wondering if you could give us an example of a derogatory body language? I'm just kidding.
I was gonna say, the nice thing is on a virtual meetings, there's not a lot of body language, right? It's only your face that I see.
We could give you lots of examples.
Deputy Mayor, do you have a question?
Just one comment. If you go back and look at your existing council rules, that paragraph was part of the paragraph 4.4. So we felt that they should be two separate distinct items because deportment didn't really fit in very well with the use of electronic devices that are prohibited. So we separated those out for that reason. And Acting City Attorney Hyde mentioned and said sort of Kendra that the word deportment should be the heading for that. And I think as the mayor said, not that we have done this in this council, but if you kind of take a survey of councils across the region, there have been issues with certain councils that have created some real bad things, if you will, that go on in council chambers. And all this is intended to do is to allow us to naturally act professionally, cordially, and make sure that we're addressing the issues to the chair when we have comments and discussions and to kind of keep us all on that same even line. So that's kind of the purpose. And the comment part was not part of the original statement. So I felt that putting that in there as well kind of fit in with the rest of the deportment item.
Okay, I'm going to move on to page 13. I don't think I see any hands raised. Councilmember J. Raj, do you have anything to add? I thought I saw some, no, okay. So page 13, Section 8.7. And Sections 8.7 and 8.8, I would recommend that you read them together. This is parliamentary procedure clarification. So it's clarifying that a motion to table effectively removes that item being considered without a time certain. So when a motion to table occurs, that is without a time certain. In Section 8.8, that is a discussion on a motion to postpone. So where there is a motion to consider something later and a time is set, that is a motion to postpone. If there's no time set, it's a motion to table. And a motion to table, it effectively removes the item and it is not a debatable motion. A motion to postpone, that actually can be amendable. It can be reconsidered at the same meeting. And if you want to remove it from that time certain, a motion can be brought and it requires two-thirds majority vote. So these two changes are just clarifying the proper parliamentary procedure. On the bottom of that page, you'll see a strikeout for Section 8.16, 8.16. And that is because the roll call vote is now addressed in Sections 9.1 and 9.2 on the following page. So if you turn to the next page, you'll see the updates in Sections 9.1 and 9.2. I think that these are important changes for your consideration. This allows if anyone is uncertain in certain of the outcome of a voice vote, the presiding officer or any council member can ask for a raise of hands for the ayes or the nays. And then it also clarifies in 9.2 where it should have been anyway, that the city clerk can conduct the roll call vote if requested by the presiding officer. Okay. Now, the next item for discussion and consideration this evening is on page 15, Section 10.3. And in this section, we already, as you know, use electronic timekeeping and the city clerk is responsible for that. Now, there's a note in here from the deputy mayor and the council members that have worked on these proposed revised rules about suitable electronic device that would let the council know when the speaker's time is up. There has been some discussion on the staff and of what would be possible. But before we turn to that and Director Hinman, Deputy Mayor, do you have anything that you would like to add to this?
Thank you. Just very briefly, the way our dais is arranged, if your three council members who are sitting to the right of the mayor, the timing device that is located on the next to the city clerk is not seen by those three council members. The mayor does an excellent job and continues an excellent job of holding people for three minutes to remind them when your time is up. We do have some people that automatically acknowledge that their time is up. But, you know, every other place where you go and you see the public comment or the audience participation at the podium is the electronic device with a red, yellow, green light. And that is something for me that is just much more visible, just not only for council, but also for the speakers. Because a lot of times when I see the speakers talking, they're talking to the time clock, they're not addressing the council and mayor. So this may give them an opportunity to kind of turn their bodies toward us a little bit more and actually provide their comments to us as what they're there to do. So that's the main reason for doing this is just giving those speakers the visible identification device to let them know when to start, when they have 30 seconds left, and when their time is expired.
So if I might, Deputy Mayor, I have not seen any other hands raised at this point. What I might suggest at this time is that we would strike that note for discussion. We've talked about it in this meeting. And that staff have an opportunity to look at what available options there are that are workable for the council. I don't think it's necessarily something I would recommend that we put in the rules in terms of what specific electronic device in the way that it's used, unless the council wishes to do so. But I think staff can go back and look at what options we may have. And we may not need to address this necessarily right now also. So there might be some new options that come available when we start meeting together again.
I think that's fine. Thank you. And I think, you know, 10.3, as it's written, as you know, strictly just mentions a three-minute timer. So and you're right, it doesn't include the type of device, whatever. So I would say yes, you know, for staff to go through and identify. And also naturally to look at the cost. You know, we want to make sure that, you know, it's not a cost prohibitive item and also make sure it's doable within the, you know, within IT's situation, how they have to put this together for us and that we're not spending a whole lot of money that we may not need to spend. So definitely we'll let staff kind of take it from here.
Thank you. Okay, so our next item for consideration tonight would be on page 17. The edits are to Section 12 and specifically subsection 12.1, the deputy mayor appointment. And you'll see here a lot of track changes starting with subsection 12.1A. And the proposal from council is that this would be a significant change where the most senior member would not automatically be nominated for the deputy mayor position. This has existed in the rules previously. The most senior member automatically was placed in nomination for the consideration. And the proposal here removes that from being automatically part of the process. Of course, the most senior council member could be nominated for consideration by someone. Does anybody have any feedback on that proposal? Councilmember Sterns?
Yeah, thank you. When would this, I guess, when would this take effect?
So it depends on when we finalize these rules and when the council votes on them. If we continue as planned, we would bring this in front of you on September 8th and it would be voted upon. So the very next time that the deputy mayor would be up for consideration after September 8th, these rules would apply.
This is when?
That these rules would apply anytime after September 8th if they were voted, if this was voted on and approved by council.
Okay, since I'm new, when does this normally occur?
And I might turn to Deputy Mayor Decourcy because I haven't been through the exact time of year when this-
Usually what happens is, I believe the mayor correct me wrong, but toward the last meeting of the calendar year is when the mayor calls for the nominations and the election appointment of the deputy mayor for the next following year.
And Deputy Mayor, if I might, that does sometimes become a little bit of a challenge and we have changed it in the past when there will be a new council seated. So every other year, there is a new council seated because of elections. Even if there are no changes to that council, it still becomes a new council that is seated every two years. So there have been some times it has gone back and forth when councils feel like the existing council wants to determine who the upcoming deputy mayor is. And sometimes there is a decision to hold off and let the new council determine who the new deputy mayor is.
And can I ask another question? Under the existing rules, who would be the most senior person?
For the upcoming election, it would be Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Thanks.
Okay, so before I move on, I just wanted to check and make sure nobody has any other questions or comments or feedback. I know this is a significant change, so if you have feedback, please let me know.
Yes, this is Larry, Councilmember Brown. So this language was proposed by Deputy Mayor Decourcy, is that correct? Who proposed this language?
Councilmember Brown, I apologize. I don't know which-
I proposed the language.
And you're thinking, Councilmember J. Raj? And you're thinking, Councilmember Jay Rush?
My thinking is is to give everybody a chance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Deputy Mayor. Thank you. Just for the newer council members background. This language was changed just about two or three years ago. And so this is essentially moving the language back to what it was previously.
Okay, and I don't see any more hands raised. I don't know if you do, Deputy Mayor. Before I move on, I wanted to make sure I give plenty of time for that.
Yeah, I think that's important because substantive substantive change it is and and as the mirror mentioned. You know, when this was changed, we did have an ad hoc committee that went through this in detail. We surveyed and did analysis of many other local jurisdictions and how they did their selection. For either what they call the council president, mayor pro tem or deputy mayor. So we probably reviewed oh, close to maybe eight or nine other local jurisdictions. In this process overall before that change was made. And everybody does a little bit differently in some respects. So and as Mayor mentioned, this kind of brings it back the way it was prior to an hot committee making the the change that has now been stricken.
If at any point someone wants to go back and revisit a section we've discussed, please let me know, but I'm going to keep us moving on then. On page nineteen. You'll see at the top of page nineteen, if you post change, it's pretty minor, it's to the duties and responsibilities of the deputy mayor on under subsection twelve point two. A three. And the edit is to include the responsibility of conducting a review of these very rules with. One or two individual council members, obviously not more council members because we don't want to create an OPMA issue or. Have to do special meeting notices related to that work. And then we are going to turn to page twenty four. For our next set of substantive changes. Here you will see previously the special focus areas were tweaked recently and it does reflect those. The proper names of those committees for those areas. In addition, it this page to page twenty four and going through the next two pages through page twenty six. We're removing references to the matrix and we're updating the way that we handle topics, so. At the bottom of page twenty four. There is a effort to formalize the process to coordinate topics. And have that relationship with the department director. So it's really mirroring the way that we've started to bring topics forward and having more organization. Planning and coordination with the department directors. And similarly on page twenty six. Again, we're removing references to the matrix since we no longer use that. And we are also formalizing the appointment process to councils, boards and committees under section sixteen point six. Noting that the mayor makes those appointments on a routine base, on a rotating basis and at the discretion of the mayor. In consideration with each council member's experience, knowledge, et cetera. Now, the next item for discussion, it was noted for discussion on page twenty seven under subsection sixteen point eight. And this section is regarding advisory boards, committees and commissions. And the note you'll see in these revised rules for your consideration is that. Codified boards, committees and commissions must be brought before council for acknowledgement and approval. What that means is boards, committees, commissions that are created by city code. Those are brought to council for acknowledgement at the outset of their creation and for approval of their members. And one example might be the civil service commission. Now, there are a number of other non codified boards, committees, commissions, work groups, et cetera, they take a. They run the whole gamut in terms of their structure, but many of them are not codified because they serve an internal purpose. They're either advising on a special area, a special topic that's come up. They might be working on a particular issue with the director. And they're a more internal facing, so I'm going to turn it over to the deputy mayor at this point, but I wanted at least set out the. The background, the context for that note.
Very, thank you. The reason I had added this for discussion, I think, and and not necessarily with council members here all the time, but. There there may have been some. Not full understanding of the difference between a codified board and non codified board. We have a number of non codified boards where we as a council do not have. Those members who are appointed come before us for the acknowledgement and approval. And typically through a codified board, the mayor's office, you know, each of us, when each of us, we receive. The applications and resumes of those individuals who have been identified. By the committees that the mayor put together to serve on particular boards, commissions or 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 committees. And once we review those qualifications. We have an opportunity to say yes or no. And and as we've done in the past, when those. Applicants come before council, we vote on it and they become a member of that codified board. So in the non codified boards naturally, those may be selected by a department head, by a department director. Or a group that works with the department director, including with the mayor's office of deciding. Who may or may not be qualified to serve in those particular boards. And pretty much those boards or commissions or committees would report back to that department head. That sense, so we're removed from that process. So the discussion here that I wanted to bring up was for council, are you? Okay, I guess you might say with council not having. Approval authority or or acknowledgement authority for non codified boards, commissions or committees.
Councilmember Brown has a question.
Thank you. I'm curious, Deputy Mayor de Corsi. I think our council wants to be informed. Is there a process for non codified boards or committees to? Keep the the council informed as to the work?
Yes, there is, and I think our most recent example is what Chief O'Neill put together for us. That we were copied on. With his proposed. Procedures and policy related to the board that would serve on behalf of the of the police department on that, so. Yes, we are informed, we have an opportunity to make suggestions, comments. And to discuss those, you know, with the mayor, with the department heads. And if necessary, I guess, bring it before council to discuss overall, but we are and should be involved. And I don't think there's a circumstance where we have not been informed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stern.
So I I guess what I'm I'm a little bit confused still, so is there a is there a. Mister Deputy Mayor, is there a proposal you're suggesting?
No, I just wanted to make sure that everybody on council was clear that we have a a distinction. Between the. The boards and committees and commissions that we acknowledge and approve those members of. Versus those that we don't. But I've had a couple of council members come to me with some questions. And the basic question is, how come we don't approve those members? And the basic reason is that because they're non codified board commissions or committees. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody on council was clear of our roles. And those actions and activities, so there is no confusion when this may be coming before us. And for example, if a non codified board proposal comes before us to review. You know, we need to understand that it's for that purpose. And when those members of those particular associations are are assigned or appointed. We do not have any responsibility beyond reviewing the substance of the of the proposal, which is in the document for. That procedural policy. And we don't set the policy for that.
Okay, and because you had mentioned the. The the chief of police's advisory committee and I guess I was, I was confused by that, I think it was just presented to us as. A fait accompli, you know, and and this is, you know, in other words, is what I'm doing, it was sort of a done deal and so I just, yeah, I mean. I I guess we we don't have a role in that and we can't. Or so that that seems to be the difference between a codified and non non codified.
That is correct and and not that we don't have a role. Our role is to review, you know, use the chief as example, review what the chief has put together. And has sent to council for comments, questions, suggestions, clarifications. And have discussion around that, so, but again, you know, with that type of board. We would not be appointing acknowledging the appointment of the members that have been chosen to serve in that particular board. And that is the question before council, I mean, for for me is should we be involved in that or or not? I think, you know, looking at it from the perspective of we were informed, we had the information. I think some of us may not have been told to declare that we should have responded back to the chief. I I actually sent an email to the chief of one question, but in looking at that process. You know, what is the desire of the council in relation to that process?
I I prefer to be to have more involvement.
Mayor Backus has a question.
Yes, so there are, the the codified boards are the ones that are intended to exist in perpetuity. There are times when the non codified boards. Are put in place for a specific amount of time or the anticipation is that they are not permanent. And sometimes those are done very quickly for very specific reasons. Other times, there's a great deal of thought put into it. And it's not that council has absolutely no input, we will keep you advised on a regular basis. But it's the responsibility of council for those codified boards and typically every year, at least once a year. There is an update provided by the chairs of each one of those boards or commissions back to council in the case of the planning commission. Or the human services commission, there's typically a joint session between the city council. And the members of that commission for ongoing discussion regarding the. The beliefs or the preferences of city council, what policy decisions they might be making. It is not intended to with a non. Non codified board or. Task force, it is not the intent that you have no interaction at all. It is the intent that those are for a very limited purpose and typically not going to be a permanent. Organization now if it if it changes and there is a need to codify. Some of these activities, then we certainly would bring that back.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. And Kendra, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but. Council, as council members. If you feel there is a need for within our within our city of having a certain advisory board or a committee or a commission. That would be a codified entity, you're not prohibited from suggesting that. You could bring that up and say, I would like to propose, you know, X Y Z board. And then it would come before council after you've had an opportunity to go through that or set up an ad hoc. You set up an ad hoc committee to put that substance together, but we're not prohibited from doing that. So if there's something that a council member sees that, you know, I kind of use the term that. You may not think it's gone far enough and you'd like to do something different, you can propose that. And then we take it up as a council and have a discussion on it and ultimately come to a vote as to whether or not that is something that the the council would 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 do, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and just to add on to that, though, you do not want to have so many codified boards and commissions. That it becomes out of control to manage. The other thing is, is there is a director or staff that is attached to each one of those codified boards and commissions. They are required to have minutes and the open public meeting laws or rules that are in effect for council as well, and so we. We try not to overburden and we have added new boards and commissions. Maybe a couple during my time from council to in my current position, we have changed one, in fact, the. It used to be called the triple triple T trails transit. I can't remember the the other T now, but that is now the transportation advisory board or the tab. So there are times when some of those changes are necessary. And we try to be very responsive to those, but at the same time trying to limit to a manageable. Number of codified boards and commissions because there is a great deal of work that is attached to those as far as terms. There's there's just a great deal that goes on with staff as well in order to have a codified border commission.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and and council, you probably have, but I would encourage you to. On our city website to go through and read and review. All of the boards and commissions committees that are that are set up on our webpages because every one of those has. All the information there for all those entities that serve the city. And what the individuals responsibilities are for serving those particular roles and capacities overall, so. Any other questions or comments on that item? Hey Kendra, back to you.
Thank you, and the last piece I wanted to mention with that item is just the also the consideration of how. Efficient we can be in certain ways, so for example, there are reasons for the executive branch to have administrative functions and for staff to maybe do certain work. With more efficiencies in some ways and keeping in mind just those foundational principles of the executive and administration. Level versus the legislative branch that the council serves to serve a different branch of government as well. But I know that just for your consideration as you're thinking about the discussion that just occurred. And we're actually moving through with pretty good timeframe right now, so I'm going to turn you to page twenty eight at the bottom. Subsection seventeen point four, letter E. And this is just formalizing the process that you all have become accustomed to, I believe, and that is. That the deputy mayor, when communicating to council, will go through the council assistant. And also that city council in section F shall utilize the designated city email account only. And that actually will need to be updated within the parameters of the OP, excuse me, the OPMA, which means. You know, not four people are responding and going back and forth on an email chain, but also the reason. But also, and the reason for the designated email account would be the Public Records Act as well, so that. If there is a request, we don't have to open up your personal email account, so it's, it's for your. Protection as well as saving city staff from doing some of that extra work with public records.
That's Harper Malinga has a comment.
Yeah, really quick, the discussion we had, was that about sixteen point six? On those codified boards? Or was that different?
It's sixteen point eight specifically that we were discussing, there's that note for discussion under subsection sixteen point eight on page twenty seven. Now, councilmember Malinga, you are noting sixteen point six on page twenty six, so I. Addressed that, I didn't see any comments, but we're welcome to turn back to that if you have any feedback on sixteen point six.
Yeah, I think I must have missed when we discussed it in more detail, but I'm just trying to figure out what, what was the reason for this change on sixteen point six?
This was. The councilmember Trump Manuel's suggestion. And looking at this, just to kind of clarify. The, the appointments to those intergovernmental councils, boards or committees. And to make sure that not only everybody has a chance to serve on those committees. But also that we are looking at the council members' background, their expertise, their knowledge. Their working experience, and what can they bring to that particular assignment? And, and are they interested in serving in that particular assignment? So it's not just a, you are going to serve in this committee because, making sure that we're not only well represented. On those from the, from the city and the council members' appointment. But also to make sure that within the, the council rules of procedure. We had a more defined way of doing that. It was very fairly vague in the, in the current rules of procedure, so this kind of gives it more substance.
Councilmember Sterns has a comment.
Yeah, I'm actually, all I was just wondering is, is there a list that you could share with us of who's on what? Thanks.
Yes, that is maintained by Antoinette, the council assistant. She maintains that and it has the appointments for Sound Cities Association, for Puget Sound Regional Council. Valley Regional Fire Authority, all of the outside agencies that we have appointees to, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so. At this time, I've gone through all of the substantive changes in the rules for council's considerations, so. Do we have any more feedback, questions, comments? And when we're done with this, I'd like to just see sort of a informal nod that we have consensus moving forward. We'd like to bring it to September eighth. But before we wrap up, if anybody has any questions or feedback, I'm happy to hear those comments and feedback at this time.
It, one, one comment, Kendra, mainly for council, but if you go back to page three, which is seven of thirty eight of your packet. And at the top of the page, this is in relation to the, the seating arrangement on the dais. And if you recall, the council members who have been here for this particular season. We had an ad hoc committee that was put together to designate the seating assignments. And we kind of do that every year, so we have two or three council members that kind of put this together and then we kind of come back together and. And say, yes, it is. I thought it was just simple if the deputy mayor would just say, okay, here's where we're going to sit. And not have an ad hoc committee do that. You know, unless anybody has a real specific seating preference or where they want to sit. Which they could actually talk to the deputy mayor about and, and do that. But it kind of simplifies the whole process of our seating arrangement on the dais year by year. Hey, council, any other questions or comments or feedback or, Larry, go ahead.
I would just say that I appreciate the work of the. Subcommittee, if you will, that worked on these changes. I don't see anything that would cause. Me a great deal of heartburn, so. The part about the seniority, I understand that, you know, as a union guy. They say seniority is bad until you got it, but. It doesn't preclude us from selecting a senior person for the position. And I think one of the. You know, requirements for leadership is to have the support of, of the people that you're leading. So anyway, that was the only one that I had any concern with, but I think it's, it's, it's acceptable.
Other council members? I'm seeing some head nods, okay? Let me, let me just say that. These are called our rules of procedure. And city attorney Como could appreciate that as well as councilmember Sterns especially. Because if you are two are involved in court proceedings, whether civilly or criminally. You have an entire book of rules of procedures that you have to follow. This is for that purpose for our city council. This is not something that should be on your shelf. This is something, I kind of probably won't be able to see it, but you know, but there's mine. I keep it in my binder or folder with me all the time. And I refer to it all the time because these are our operating rules. Just like in corporate America, if we all remember that, where we had our careers and some of us still do. You have operating procedures, which are your rules. And these are the things that guide us as a council. And quite honestly, we should almost know these section by section. So there are no questions, but I encourage you that now, but also when these changes are made. And we receive the new bound copy of our council rules of procedure. That you carry them with you at all meetings and all the time. And you always have them in your possession and not stuck in a desk drawer somewhere or on your bookshelf somewhere. Because they are that important. And, you know, having this opportunity to go through this now, and I've gone through these before. We've made changes before, but this is the first time I think I've had the actual opportunity to really sit down and digest this. Literally sentence by sentence and make some of the changes that we've made to make it more clear. To have some improvements, but also to have a more defined methodology, if you will, in some of these. Applications we practice at council meetings and in our daily activities. One, for example, is the section related to deputy mayors, my communication now with council. You know, I would love nothing more than be able to send out emails to all of you all at one time, but we can't do that. We can't create those types of violations of the Open Public Meetings Act that we're all bound to, to follow. So again, you know, anytime you're communicating in that fashion to the entire council. You know, we use our council assistant, we use Antoinette for that purpose, and you have noticed that. When I send it to the outs, as Kendra mentioned, that I will put something together and say to Antoinette, please forward this on to council. It kind of keeps us within the right parameters of the Open Public Meetings Act. The other thing I wanted to comment on is the use of cell phones and that particular item related to. Not having cell phones at the dais, that was another council member's suggestion. And I think has been mentioned, you know, because we have the potential of having. The, a request for documents from, from anybody who does want to request them. Anything that we have, say, do or document or record. And have it written down or somebody seeing us put their head down, looking at our phone or tapping the buttons on our phone. That can become part of what they would request for us to produce. And also, when we're on the dais and we're potentially any of us looking down at our phones, we're not. Giving the attention that we need to give to either the audience, the speakers, or the proceedings that are going on. Now, one comment that was made with that was that in some cases, when we bring our, our phones. We have our notes or information related to committees or boards that we are a part of. And we use that as reference while we're looking at our phones for either the dates or the information we have on our phones. But I guess I would just say that. For that purpose, you know, maybe it's just easier to print something out. And just jot down some notes instead of having us look at our electronic devices for that purpose. Councilmember J Raj, I think made a good point related to our iPads. If we bring our iPads with us and we're using our iPads for that, yes, that's an electronic device. But we're not emailing, we're not texting, we're not looking at. Correspondence maybe coming in, we may be using it for a reference point, and perhaps that is okay. I guess that's kind of what council needs to look at as well for that particular item. Is that an okay device to use for that purpose? So we'll kind of leave it there and once again ask for any comments or questions or concerns. Or anything else that you may want to discuss related to this topic tonight, and the floor is open. Okay, I'm not seeing any, so Kendra, any final words from you?
Yes, thank you for working on this with me, Deputy Mayor, I appreciated all the input. And then I will bring this back with the accompanying resolution number five, five, four, three at the September eighth meeting. Thank you.
Very, very good, thank you, and I also want to thank our city attorney Como. Or then acting attorney Dan Hyde, councilmember J Raj, councilmember Trump Manuel. For your hard work on this. Kendra and acting city attorney Hyde, myself. Spent about, well, about two and a half hours together over a couple of days, kind of going through this sentence by sentence, so. I really appreciated their guidance, their involvement, their input. And for, for Kendra, for you and your staff for finalizing this and putting it into a format. That was much easier understood than, than the one I put together, so greatly appreciated for that. And council, thank you again for this. I would again encourage you now to continue to go through this. And any questions or comments or concerns that you have, do not hesitate to send those to our city attorney Como. And she will bring them back to us in a format that can be copied to all of us for consideration. And as she mentioned, we're looking at bringing this in at the next city council meeting for a, for a vote, so. Our timeframe is fairly short, but I would encourage you again to go back through this document one more time or even two more times. And give it your final thoughts before we bring it to council for a vote. And with that, once again, thank you everybody for your participation. And let's see, do we have any other items on the agenda tonight for discussion or any new business?
No.
Not seeing, not seeing any, thank you again, everybody, have a good evening, wear your mask, we are adjourned.